A series of namings at Baruch College which we will consider as a group. David Chan today, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I believe, I'm actually, this is the first time I've had to present on behalf of the college in this particular regard, so I presume all the supporting documentation is great.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we've received it and we've read it.
Excellent, okay. So, most of what is here to be named are relatively recent gifts to the college that represent, mostly represent classroom and space naming opportunities. There are a couple, the first two on the agenda which are older items which we, in doing our inventory and cleanup, realized had never been presented to the, to the board for approval and consideration.
Okay. So you can just read through the 10?
Sure.
And just so that they're in the records, officially at the records.
Absolutely. Okay, number one is resolution regarding the naming of the Lawrence and Carol Zicklin Chair in Corporate Integrity and Governance, resolution regarding the naming of the William F. Aldinger III Chair in Banking and Finance, resolution regarding the naming of the Betty and Marvin Levine Planter and the Sarah and Louis Levine Planter, resolution regarding the naming of the Catherine Garrity and John Gripenetti Classroom, resolution regarding the naming of the Arlene and Bernard Richards Classroom, resolution regarding the naming of the Ruth and Sam Perelson Hillal Suite, resolution regarding the naming of the Warren Breslow's Class of 65 Classroom, resolution regarding the naming of the pergola Sustainable Classroom for Real Estate Education, resolution regarding the naming of the Nathan Adler Class of 60 Classroom, and resolution regarding the naming of the Alan G. Aaronson Department of Marketing and International Business.
Thank you. May I have a vote, a call for a vote of approval?
Some movement, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
May I ask Marilyn Hoskin, Dean of the Department of Social Science, to present Items 1B11, the naming of an honor center at City College.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This again is a naming opportunity, the law firm of Skadden, Arv, Slate, Maeger and Plong has provided a gift for the development of an honor center in legal studies at City College, centered to be renovated and completed early in the semester with the name of the firm supporting it on.
May I have a vote of approval?
Some movement, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. President Jennifer Robb, will you present 1B12?
Thank you very much for consideration, this is a motion to create the Julia Latthor Professor of Child Welfare at Hunter College. Ms. Latthor was a social worker with groundbreaking work in the early 1900s, and this chair is created to honor the work of one of our social work faculty who's consistently contributing to the advancement of the child welfare agenda. We have raised discretionary money that we will be allocating to support the expenses of this chair, and we are proposing that Dr. Gary Malin, a national expert in child welfare, somebody who's been consistently called upon to work on national issues such as family reunification after Katrina and LBGT adoption issues, be the first holder of the Julia Latthor Chair.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
Some movement, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
I just have a question.
Social worker.
Will there be a, will there be some type of a ceremony or something at the school?
Yes, we usually, often we'll do a few named chairs at the same time, so we're about to think about who's coming up and plan one, so are we inviting you?
Yes.
Well, no, I love, we love to, our social workers are very excited to have a social worker on the board, so you are always welcome, and I'm glad that you brought that up, and we will let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much. Been moved in a second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Dean Mogelusivsko. Mogelusivsko, I always call him.
That's okay.
incorrectly, I would honor it for other.
Dean O.
Right.
The establishment of the CUNY School of Professional Studies Foundation is a natural and necessary result of our growth and success. The foundation will encourage giving to the school as well as provide the structure and support required for administering gifts and contributions. Funds raised by the foundation will support and advance the educational research activities of the school and expand our capacity to offer scholarships to our students.
Congratulations. May I have a motion for approval?
Some movement, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
I have a question.
Question?
The, who will, once we approve this, then who will constitute the foundation?
We have a-
Since usually we use alums to constitute our foundation.
We have an initial board of three people, one is indeed an alum, and I think a very distinguished one, Phil, and another is not an alum, and then we will be expanding more as we go forward.
Who is that alum?
Bob Cassine.
Bob Cassine, okay. Great idea, it's really a great idea.
Congratulations in average. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Chancellor Schaefer?
Thank you. It has long been the policy of this university to mandate a periodic review of our faculty and to provide them with guidance as to how they're doing along the path towards tenure. That policy and some of the procedures are embodied in resolutions passed by the Board of Trustees, other procedures are set forth in the collective bargaining agreement with our faculty union. It sometimes happens, however, that faculty members either don't or feel that they don't get sufficiently detailed guidance, and when they come up for tenure are, believe that they, were not given sufficient warning as to what might, might come. And a number of campuses over the years have developed a very sound practice of somewhere around the middle of that process, having a dean or other appropriate academic administrator look at faculty files and review them with the department chairs to see that the paper record that exists in the files reflects the reality of the situation. Department chairs being human, sometimes it's a little hard to give a tough review to a colleague who you work with every day. For that and other reasons, it occasionally happens that the, the file really doesn't reflect the reality. And so, this is a resolution to spread to all of the campuses that salutary practice of having this pre-tenure review somewhere about the middle of the process, so that another pair of eyes looks at the file, talks to the department chair, and then in turn produces a written report for the individual faculty member to make sure that that faculty member has a fair and a clear understanding of where he or she is in the, in the path towards tenure. And so, we think, we've vetted this with the campuses, we've talked to faculty representatives, and I think everybody agrees that this is a good thing. It not only solves occasional problems, but more importantly, it provides an element of guidance and fairness to faculty members, which I think is important to all of us. So, that's the, that's the proposal.
Thank you. Press for unharmed.
Yeah, I would just like to add a little bit to that. I mean, I personally anyhow largely concur with Rick's remarks about this policy. Having been a grievance counselor for some time, I've seen this kind of miscommunication quite often where candidates are not advised adequately in regard to the progress they're making and do, in fact, then suffer some rather unpleasant surprises when they reach the, the tenure stage. I do think though that one thing that, one concern that has surfaced and been communicated to me by faculty is a concern, well, I think it comes in two forms, one is an additional letter in one's file, and I think the more letters in one's file, the more nervous people tend to get. The other is the concern that a dean perhaps misused the process, because I think the way your policy is written, it is aimed at assessing the kind of guidance that's being given to the candidate. But it is possible, I don't know whether or how one exactly forecloses this possibility, but it is possible that one could end up with deans who are not expert in the field of the particular candidate making assessments of publications and things like that, and I think this, you know, rather concerns some faculty members. So I thought I'd make those known, although I myself feel that this actually is an advance in the sense that it adds a check and balance to a process that sometimes really needs one.
If I might respond, I think those are two very good points. I think in the majority of cases, perhaps the vast majority of cases, the department chair has done a competent and adequate job, the paper record reflects what has gone on, and that guidance has been adequate, and this really should add very little other than an acknowledgement in, yes, another piece of paper in the file, but an acknowledgement that, a sort of a summary of the process to date, which really won't contain very much new information, and then in other cases it will, but that's because it should. With respect to the involvement of the deans, I know there's been, we've had some conversation about that. Of course, in all of our campuses, the process for promotion and tenure eventually gets to levels beyond the department where faculty members who are involved may not be as expert in that particular field, and yet they, they do have a say, and it's better for the faculty member to find out how someone outside the field might view the record before it's too late. But I also think that deans being, I think, experienced at this would tend to rely on the department chair, and the questioning would not be so much, what do I think about this person's scholarship, but to press the department chair, what do you think about this person's scholarship, what do other people in your department, and then test whether those answers are consistent with what the written record reflects to date. And we would hope and I expect that presidents and provosts who are pretty experienced of these things will convey to their deans that that's really the purpose of this review.
Thank you. Any other questions? Where being none, may I have a motion for approval?
Some movement, Madam Chair.
Second? Been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. The final item on our revised agenda is the university's campus and workplace violence policy, which will be presented by Vice Chancellor Worders.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 1B15 is a resolution to adopt a new workplace violence policy in accordance with New York State's Workplace Violence Prevention Law and the Public Employee Safety and Health Agency's Regulations. The policy we will consider today supersedes and replaces the one adopted by the Board of Trustees in 2004. The policy defines workplace violence as any physical assault or acts of aggressive behavior occurring where an employee performs any work-related duty in the course of his or her employment. This revised policy requires each college to conduct a risk assessment and to develop a campus-specific workplace violence prevention program. State regulations require that authorized employee representatives participate in various aspects of the program, including the risk assessment. We are working with the unions on this. The policy also mandates annual training and workplace violence prevention for every university employee in compliance with the Pesh, with the PESH regulations. Madam Chair, I present item 1B15 for your, for the committee's approval.
Any questions, comments? Where being none, may I have a motion for approval?
Some movement, Madam Chair.
Second? It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Opposed, abstention, Madam Chair.
Brain freeze, brain freeze. Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries, thank you very much. And reporting to Vice Chancellor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to note for the committee's information, there's been, there is one bylaw waiver that will appear in the Chancellor University Report for one research associate at CCNY, and there is another for an assistant EEO at Lehman College, there's also a search waiver for an assistant EEO at Lehman College. Madam Chair, I'd also like to take this opportunity to update the committee on the efforts of my office and the university to become more efficient by centralized payroll operations. In December, we opened our first centralized payroll operation at a satellite office at Metro Tech in space provided by Maeger Everest College. Currently, that location handles full-time payroll operations for the Brooklyn senior colleges, and in March, part-time payroll functions will also move there. Early reports on the new centralized operation have been very favorable. This summer, we plan to proceed to the next phase of payroll centralization when we occupy newly leased space at 395 Hudson Street. Our goal there is to centralize payroll operations for all of the Manhattan senior colleges. We're currently seeking space for future phases that will include the Queens and the Bronx as well as the community colleges. On a second note, I would like the board to know that we have begun work on a comprehensive study of diversity in CUNY. At our April meeting, Dean Jennifer Rubain, the university dean for diversity, will make a presentation on, and a progress report on that study as it goes forward. I just wanted to give those bits of information to the committee.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Comments?
Great report, thank you, I'm glad that we are moving forward with that study. That's good.
Where being none, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Some movement, Madam Chair.
In second, moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Good meeting.
Thank you very much.
Good meeting.
No.
Four different colleges.
Yeah, I know.